Mayor.
Matt Rar.
Here.
Robell.
Here.
Mr. Hoover.
President.
Mayor Malman.
Here.
Such I know.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was published in the December 18th issue of the Star Ledger and in the December 20th issue of the Belleville Times. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Belleville Town Hall Baltimore Board and a copy is on file in the municipal office.
Congratulations.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a different public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly Morrow, just, I updated the council a few seconds ago. We're gonna just do a quick change of the order instead of going to the next item, which is A, manager. Beginning our conference sessions do have item number five, the presentation. I just wanna skip to item number five, do the presentation, and we're gonna come back up to the top. Is that okay?
Sure.
Morrow?
Yes. On the agenda this evening, you'll see a, later on, a resolution authorizing township to apply for a grant.
Morrow, we're not doing your thing yet.
Well, I just notified.
Oh, that's the presentation you...
I'm just letting you know.
Oh, the presentation from Michael James. Oh, I figured I was asking you to my president. I'm sorry.
No, no. I would've given you a heads up on that one. So just let the public know, we are gonna skip ahead to Roman Newell, number five. We're gonna do a presentation to Mr. Michael James for his actions that you've all heard about in the news. Without further ado, can I have Mr. James come forward, please? Yes, sir. Congratulations. So, for those of you that are here and those that may very well be watching either live on video or archiving, Mr. James was basically, I wanna say, national news for heroic efforts in rescuing a woman and saving a life. And that's something that we cherish as a community here in Belleville, that we always say that Belleville does the right thing when it comes time to do the right thing. So I just wanna commend Mr. James for his valour, for his bravery. I know the council supports this initiative. We do have a resolution here that I'm gonna read, and then we're gonna pass actually this resolution formally tonight in our agenda. But we want to just change the order of schedule. It's got a little boy here and his wife, and they don't need this necessarily to be the entire meeting. But interestingly, as I read this resolution, I learned that actually tomorrow is National Good Samaritan Day, which I had no idea. I don't know who found that, Kelly or whoever wrote this resolution, but that's amazing, 'cause so tomorrow is National Good Samaritan Day, and today we probably have the nation's newest Good Samaritan. And we're very proud of that, and I do congratulate you on that. So without further ado, I just wanna read a proclamation. This resolution will be passed today by mayor and council. Whereas on the morning of Monday, March 4th, 2019, a driver struck a guardrail on Route 21 in Belleville, New Jersey, before going into the Passaic River. And whereas, the woman driver was able to get out of the vehicle through a broken window and make it to the top of her car, which was sinking and floating away from the shore. Whereas, Michael James, in a car, pulled over at the scene and without a second of hesitation, decided to dive into the Passaic River to rescue a panicking woman before her vehicle floated away about 100 yards from shore. Whereas, Michael James was able to reach the woman and calm her down while holding her until police arrived. Whereas, upon ride to location, Belleville Police Officers threw Life Preservers in ropes to both the victim and Good Samaritan and pulled them both out of the Passaic River. And whereas, we observe National Good Samaritan Day on March 13th to celebrate those who perform act of kindness and for those in need, especially those who are strangers. Michael James is deserving of this recognition and thanks. Now therefore being resolved, at the mayor municipal council of town to Belleville, hereby express their warm appreciation and gratitude to a Good Samaritan, Michael James, resident of Belleville, for his actions on March 4th, 2019, that undoubtedly saved a woman's life. Congratulations. So I'm gonna ask Michael if he wants to say a few words, but before I do, I also want to say that this is a hero. I mean, this is somebody who's a private citizen, minding his own business, driving in a car, seizing action, a kinda guy like that, somebody who runs into a burning building, somebody who does something that they didn't anticipate to do when they woke up that day. That's a hero. We will be honoring, also, I talked to our police chief, we will be also honoring those police officers that responded, 'cause they did have a very quick response. They had never used, I'm told, and I actually read a report on it, they've never used a Life Preserver. They never threw something with rope. They didn't even know they had that kind of equipment. Not that they didn't know it, but they didn't ever use it. So they popped the trunk, they found what they needed, they threw it, took multiple attempts, and they also performed very well, and we're gonna honor them for their valour as well in a couple weeks. But today was really about you and about how we have a resident that just stood up, rose to the occasion, and saved a life. And that's something that's very deserving of our recognition. So without further ado, if you have any few words you wanna say?
I'm just blown away by all the recognition from us and any of this, any demonstrations or any of this.
I know. It's, I first got the report early in the morning, and it was just literally Good Samaritan. We didn't even know your name at that point. It wasn't until later on in the afternoon that I started seeing some of the social media reports. We actually had a conversation probably the next day. I figured I would be last in line when the national news was calling. So we actually scoped the next day, and we actually have a meeting set up tomorrow as well. So yeah, so without further ado, our most recent hero in Belleville, resident, somebody definitely deserving of our honour and our praise. So thank you again, Michael.
Nice, I have a quick question.
I wanna commend you, okay? You deserve a plaque as big as this whole room, okay? For what you have done, and you deserve the best.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Michael, I got a quick question for you. Do you run the Navy?
Yes, sir.
My dad was a naval A V, got to go. Thank you for your service.
No problem.
Thank you all. Thank you. Congratulations. Look, it's nice to get good stories once in a while. We've actually had a lot of them lately, and we like good news. That's good stuff. We're gonna move forward with the rest of our meeting. So today is a conference meeting, so you're gonna hear us discuss different things. Unfortunately, there's no public participation. That'll come later on in the regular meeting. But right now, we have a Mr. Manager, item A. Do you have anything specific working at this point? Nothing at this point in time. So we have item B, we have a town to return, he has one item.
Yes, we have Mr. Kevin O'Connor here from X-Net, who's gonna do a very brief presentation, provide mayor and council with copies of their presentation regarding certain installation of certain wires on the pole.
James Sessions.
Oh, James Sessions.
James, what I'm gonna do, before you speak, just know that we are live streaming today, so if you just project and speak loudly, unfortunately, you don't have a microphone. We'll work on that. Specifically, we're here to hear about Councilwoman Burke, this would be of interest to you. There's some upgrades going on in Silver Lake, so the town attorney wanted you to hear it directly, and yours, all here directly.
Okay, briefly, X-Net is a wireless infrastructure company, similar to what Crown or American Tower would do. We don't build towers, we lay fiber or small cell distributed antennas, distributed antenna systems. Basically, moving forward in telecommunications, you won't have large towers or large platforms on buildings where you have 12 large antennas. What you'll be finding more now is small cell nodes, which is generally a two-foot antenna on top attached to a pole, or something like what we have now, where it's like a one-foot by one-foot box, two radios and a small DC emitter on the cable strand itself. In the next 10 years, it's projected that you'll probably have a small cell node or antenna anywhere between 500 and every 750 feet. X-Net is currently working on a project with T-Mobile, Atlanta project, and we plan to install five nodes in the city of Belleville, tops of Belleville. These nodes are strand mounted, there will not be any excavation, we're not facing any poles at all, we're just running fibers between certain pole locations and adding five nodes to those at certain poles within Belleville. As I said, oh, how it will come from the top, it's really an intrusive, I believe you ought to pitch it to the county, to show exactly what the strand off looks like, and that is good to go with the process.
We actually, we actually heard this a couple of months ago.
Yeah, a couple of months ago, yeah. Just, it's a little different, but yeah. It's just a new company, and I thought, since it's going to be going up in Silver Lake, and Councilwoman Burke would probably see them doing it, if anybody, if she, if anybody had any questions, she would be in a position to answer. Somebody else?
AT&amp;T.
Oh, that's...
It was AT&amp;T that originally came, but this is a contractor for T-Mobile.
This is, this is X-NET system. Now, technically, we'll work with anyone, but this project is for T-Mobile.
Right, right, yes. So you're a subcontractor for them, is that kinda how you're doing it, or you're...
We're our own company, we lay fiber, very much like you would have Crown Council come in and say, hey, you wanna build a tower, we have T-Mobile going on that tower, and we're doing it for the purpose of that.
You own the fiber?
Right.
Okay, so it's your fiber, it's your asset. Does this help facilitate the 5G stuff, is that...
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Basically, it's capacity. So all of you guys have full bars on your phone, but every time you try to go online, you see the lines...
Even if we're not T-Mobile?
Uh, not at the moment, as there's more companies coming.
Right. So other companies can, can use that?
The fiber.
Right now, T-Mobile's...
Right, other companies can use the fiber.
Right.
The fiber's there, but if I heard you correctly, you can have like amplifier and all that. No, it's, yeah.
Antennas.
Basically, it's a little salsa. It's a little salsa.
This is what it's gonna look like.
Let me see.
This is what it's gonna be. It's gonna be on the board, you're gonna be more...
God bless you.
If you have that talent.
Your face will say.
Well, yes.
All persons can use the fiber.
Correct. Essentially, is the 5G built out, and you'll see more and more of this.
I'll be watching.
She will.
Any specific questions, Greg? Well, good, and I think it was good for us to hear that just now, that you guys would be in the air. About, when might you start?
Uh, well, depending on when we're looking to try to start, between April and May.
Permits, April and May.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we're into item B. Do we have representatives here from FinCredit?
Yes, we do.
So I'm gonna ask you the same thing, just come on forward. We are, we are live streaming, so I'm gonna ask you to just speak as loudly as you can, 'cause I'm the one that gets complaints online, and they can't hear you.
I'll try my best.
You're doing good. So just to give the council some, we actually had this scheduled a few months ago, there was, I think, a scheduled conflict where the vendor couldn't show up. This is a shopper program, a rewards card, I believe Mr. Sheldon has spoken about this in the past, at West Orange?
Yes, West Orange, yes.
So we, I'm gonna just let you give a couple minutes introduction, and then we'll feel...
Yeah, basically, property tax card, FinCredit developed this program called Property Tax Card, which is a township-supported property tax reward to local residents for shopping locally. In other words, merchants will offer a discount or a reward, so to speak, based on purchase by the local resident, and that, that percentage that they will offer will be allocated to their property tax, what they owe to, to the township of Belleville. The program is right now running in 25 townships in New Jersey, including Newark, and more coming onboard. The way that it works is very simple, like I said, the township and us, FinCredit, will get together and round up businesses. The local businesses will then offer, by participating into the program, will offer this incentive. We issue what, and I have a, I think I have a copy here, a card like this, this is Marlboro, the one, first town that adopted this program, and basically, it's a reward card where the resident will take this card, register online, and then patronize the local merchant. And by patronizing the local merchant, the more they spend at the local merchant, the more rewards they're gonna get. This card will be allocated and just be the town, so if they lose the card, if the residents lose the card, it doesn't matter, it will be their cards, no matter what.
Okay, stand around.
So, you see it?
Okay, stand around.
Sure.
So the, just correct me, the, the customer gets a discount?
Yes, it's a reward, not a discount. If they still go, let's say you go to a restaurant, local restaurant, and the restaurant offers 10% property tax reward, you go in, your bill comes to $100. You will pay as a resident the full $100, the restaurant then will swipe that card or put the number in, and $10 out of the $100 will be allocated versus the property tax that that resident...
Go against the tax code, basically.
And what the, these, besides just extra customers, is that, with the incentive for the business owners to...
Extra customers, we also do marketing, where we send out email blasts for the customers, for the merchants. We do branding, they have the option of putting the banner ads on our website, and we also help out with the phone calls, et cetera.
So what does it cost to the township?
Nothing.
What does it really cost to the township?
The cost of the township is basically zero. What all, what happens is, there are, the cards need to be made up, and also window clings that we offer, like in this case, that's a shop announcement, where the merchant will place it in their, their window to announce.
You said, you said there were basically nothing.
Well, you, basically nothing to township, because all the towns that are in the program, they get sponsored by the bank where they hold the money.
Gotcha.
So the bank will pay for the cards, that's the only cost.
Township like Belleville, for the, for the ID cards, for that, what are we talking?
Well, it depends, how many people, how many people are in Belleville?
We have about 38,000 residents.
38,000, so you're talking about 10,000 households, about 8,000, 10,000. Yeah, you would, every card is about a buck ten, so you figure you wanna get about 10,000 to 15,000 cards, and window clings, so you're talking about a cost of about 12, $13,000 more or less, but again...
One-time cost a year?
One-time cost, that's it. If there are more cards to be made, then there will be obviously additional costs, but about 13, 10 to 13,000 cards, and out of that, about 3,000 to 5,000 people will probably register and be active users of the card.
Who solicits, who solicits the banks or the local businesses to round up that money? The Arvis?
The township, yes.
Okay, so we pay you, and then we have to go out?
No, 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 you can go directly, before you do that, every town, before they do, they get a commitment from the sponsor.
Gotcha.
In certain areas, we have multiple sponsors, like the big car dealer, but it's mostly the bank. Investors Bank is, is a big supporter of the program, so we always suggest the towns to go to the bank that has the account of the township, and they will most likely...
They handle a transaction fee and all that stuff?
Everything.
Well, no, no, there's no, there's no...
No, 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 I mean, in, in any other context, there would be a transaction. In this context, what they're doing is they're paying, they're paying everything, just for the flow of money.
No, no, it's not a credit card.
No, no, but you still gotta move money.
No.
No, no, it's a reward. Like, but you would get a ShopRite or something like that.
If the guy's taking that $10, right, how does he give the township that $10?
We hold the money in escrow, on a dedicated account for the, with the township.
There's still a transaction occurring, there is, there's still transactions, so you understand.
But not, it's not, it's not at the moment of purchase?
No.
Transaction?
No, it's not at the moment of purchase.
The point, the point of purchase, there's, there's a transa, there's gotta be, actually, a transa...
I don't think there is, though.
If there's a credit card. How does the money get into the, into the bank?
That's a great question.
We do, we go to the merchant, and we'll take the money from the merchant.
When, the end of the month, weekly?
No, once a week.
Once a week.
Once a week.
So you're clearing him once a week?
We're clear once a week based on the number of swipes or...
Right. So there's still, there's still a transaction.
So then, how does the residents, once a year, go ahead, on third quarter, with the third quarter tax bill, will send the tax, the money to the township, Belleville, in this particular case. One payment for the year.
And they have to...
And it's all, it's all electronics. We'll send you the payment, but the only thing that the person, the tax official has to press a button, and all the blocks are...
That's the light, I understand that law, yeah. So would the only end user, the property tax owners? If I don't own a piece of property, but I really, I can still get 10%?
For renters?
Right, what happens?
For renters, we do a rebate check upon the deal. They get a check based on the amount. Now, all the residents have full access to their account. Once they register with the card, they will, with their email address and a password, they can go in and see all the transactions that they've done for the, we have, sometimes merchants forget to add credits to residents, they call us, they'll send us receipts and the card number, and we'll add on. If it's a big charge, then we'll clear with the merchant.
So when you sign up online, really the personal information that's being put into your system is first name, last name?
First name, last name, block and lock, that will populate automatically, then the address, email address and phone number, that's it.
How is it that, obviously, we, it's a $12,000 investment, you can go out to banks and raise money for that. How is it, year two, year three, how do you make your money, year two, year three?
We do take a percentage off the percentage that the merchant gives.
So it's on that side?
So, yes.
On the merchant side?
It's on the merchant's side, it's not on the township's side.
Okay, just, I had a quick question. So when this, and there are transactions here, so when you, at the end of the year, you give us a file?
Correct.
Third quarter taxes.
Third, third quarter taxes, we get a file, that we need to basically load into our system somehow, right? Because, because really, what it has to do is say, okay, Joe Smith gets $10, $50 off, this one gets $100 off. Is there like a standard file format that comes across?
Yes, it's a standard file format, I believe New Jersey has a standardized format for all the township.
So we can feed it right in.
They only have to press, believe me, the tax collector of the township only has to press a button, and all...
It'll come right across.
Beautiful.
Everything will be elegant.
I have a question. Is this ever extended for people who are not residents in the town, but that would want to be invested in the community, work here?
Yes, it's up to the township. Again, this is a township program, so if the township allows people visiting...
So how does that work for them? Because we're, you know, let's say they have police officers, they would just get the check like that.
And they get the rebate. Yeah, yeah, it's keep the money in town. That's how the program works.
Keep the business, keep the...
Keep the business and growth of business.
Build our business.
I have a question. You spoke earlier about the restaurant, $100, 10%. Who sets the percentage?
The business.
And what is the percentage usually, from your experience?
It varies. Usually restaurants vary between 8 to 15%. Then there are plumbers, electricians, local businesses, they give 8 to 10 to 12, some people put a cap, like when roofers or big jobs that they do, they don't put more than like $250 for whatever job.
So something like ShopRite, let's say, let's say if ShopRite participated in this, where people go there sometimes more than once a week, and bills are very high when they go to a supermarket, so some people could probably walk away with a few hundred-dollar savings as far as their taxes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Maybe in a thousand dollars.
I can tell you that Mayor Hornet, the mayor of Marlboro, the first year when we introduced, he saved about $700 on his property itself. Now, we do, just to address that, ShopRite is not a friend of the program.
They probably are.
What we have, though, it is a supermarket, we have food emploring down, which is part of the key food chain down in Marlboro, and they only give about 2%, but the 2% when you go and shop every week, it adds up.
So, and we, if we decide that we wanna pursue it, and obviously you would come back for more in-depth questions, today was just an overview, but I pay my taxes through my, my mortgage company.
Correct.
So my mortgage only pays Belleville. How is it that, if you issue a credit in the third quarter?
Because most mortgages, they get one time, the bill from the township, and that's during church hours. So on the bill, on the tax bill, you will have a line that says tax credit. So let's say I owe $10,000 to Belleville, and I, and I have $1,000 rewards, then what you're gonna send to the mortgage company is a bill, they're gonna say, Joe owes $9,000 in his reason why, then the mortgage company will then pass along.
I'm sure you're, you're in 25, 10, you've, you've got most of this worked out, it sounds like.
We've been doing it for seven years. We have 25 towns.
Okay. So if we have no other questions, we're gonna move on. Any other questions that are pressing? If we decide to pursue, we'll obviously come back, we'll have a more in-depth presentation and talk about it, but I think it's over.
Can I give you some brochures if you have some additional questions, I'll pass them along?
I'm just, council, just so you know, I'm trying to keep this moving, because at 7:00, now we have a lot, but at 7:00 we have a public hearing that we kinda have to go ahead.
Thank you.
Little trifle.
That's it, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so next up, we have, I'm just looking for an update, we have an update to discuss.
We're still trying to get a meeting together, yeah.
Right, Morrow? Waiting on a meeting to...
We're trying to get these guys to come in and meet with us.
So what, who, who are we waiting on a meeting with? Because this has been too long for me.
I guess it's the, the guys who did the audit, right? The guys who did the IT audit, we gotta meet with them?
Yes. We need to get the folks that did the IT audit to come in, to sit down with committee members, and go over everything and lay out a book. Because, yeah, right now, we're, we're looking to introduce a budget, like within the next two, two meetings or so, and we need to have at least a ballpark, and just so, and I know I'm speaking to the choir here, we all know this process, but I need money in, in the, in a technology bond this year. Even we bond for X, we don't get charged unless we draw from it. So I'm looking for a rip and replace number, which I think we all in agreement, we're at a rip and replace. A rip and replace number, a number for installation, and then a number for maintenance. Maintenance can be contracted out of multiple companies, we could pick one eventually, but it's just, I wanna, I need to get this into this year's budget, which means that we need some kind of a number. So Morrow, is that on your list?
Yes. I mean, the maintenance, you could put in operations, too, right?
Yeah, the maintenance, we don't have bond for that, but we're gonna need a number on that one. Okay, so that's, that's in the works. Next, Councilwoman DePena, I just wanted to see what we were gonna do for National Autism Day?
Yes, so, um, April is Autism Awareness Day, and I'll speak later to the Color Run, but I brought that up, that is something that we're working together with Board of Education, the Homeless School Associations, and we're raising awareness. The Color, the Color Run is not a competitive run, it's just a fun run that we're putting together. So we have, so far, more than 200 signups, which we're very excited about, but we still have more opportunity for people to sign up, and please do spread the word in terms of that. One thing that we did want to consider was taking part in the Light It Up Blue Initiative, which what it entails is just purchasing a blue light bulb, and we do not need to, it's not expensive, it can be donated, I do it in my business all the time, and it's just really an initiative to say, we understand that this is something that deserves more, more research, more attention, we are with you, with the families that are, that have children with autism or special needs, the Empire State Building does it, it's just a really great way to let our families know that we are with you. And it really, all it requires is that, it's purchasing a blue light bulb and putting it in town hall, we're hoping that we can do a little bit more than just that.
What, what is the date, is there some specific date?
It's April 2nd, is Autism, it's International Autism Awareness Month, Day, but all, the whole month of April is Autism Awareness Month, so that would probably stay up, which could, it could, yes, and I would like to extend the invitation to maybe businesses that would want to do that in the front of their, their house and do some type of a, yes, instead of do some type of initiative, where maybe you take a picture and share it on social and do some type of a, yes, instead of do some type of initiative where maybe you take a picture and share it on social media and just kind of say, you know, Bell will light set up blue and we're being a bit more of an inclusive community. So thoughts, questions on that?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Tucci, can we get two light bulbs?
Like Kmart.
Because I think what we should do for the house, the two lights out.
We should do two lights out.
All in the globe, we do like those.
You do? Oh, okay.
A lot of people put lights on their house just.
Yes.
Definitely. Okay, do it every year.
I agree.
Absolutely, we'll do it again.
And then we'll take a picture and maybe at least bring a bit more awareness to the fact that we're doing that. Great, thank you.
Great idea. All right, next up, we have an interesting one. That was a architect was here and I had the opportunity to walk through this room with him one day. And this kind of came from, it spiraled. So again, this is a work session, a caucus, so we're here to discuss things. I've been talking a lot about since July 1st, we've been live streaming the meetings. So this has kind of snowballed into the fact that I'm currently using hardware and technology that's mine. It works, it's not the best. A lot of other council chambers have their own hardwired cameras, monitors, a screen, so that even when you're here for a zoning board meeting, a planning board meeting, the exhibits can be shown on a projector so people in the audience can see it. There's just, this room hasn't changed in decades. So that started with potentially looking at some flat panel monitors with a camera that can shoot over here in this corner to an exhibit or a zoning board or a planning board meeting, so everybody sitting there can see it. And then it kind of migrated into the microphones aren't loud enough. I hear the next day after a council meeting from our live stream that they can't hear. There's no microphone for a speaker, there's no microphone down below. So we did have a proposal a few months back for about $36,000, I believe, for audio and video equipment for this room here. New microphones, three cameras, projector, flat panels, so everybody in the audience can see everything. That was great. And then I realized after a planning board meeting, we have right now seven council people up here. We've recently added our town attorneys, so we have eight people up here. And interestingly, if you count the panels that are here in front of me, you're going to count five. Because this dais was designed for five, a different form of government, five commissioners. The dais has lasted longer than that former government did. So this was designed for five people, five panels. For a planning board meeting, we have 10 people up here. Nine members and an attorney. We can, I sit on the planning board. We cannot all get our elbows on this dais. We just can't do it. So we're limited. We cannot expand the size of the room. Potentially looking at a reconfiguration of this dais here, of maybe that first row here. Just so that, because I've talked to the court administrator, she has issues when prisoners come in, the police department have to walk them through here, they have to move the table, you've got to swing that door open, they've got to go that way, close the door, bring them in this way, so the bar is there. It's not convenient, it's not conducive, much easier if they come in over there. So little modifications like that, it's just something I wouldn't mind exploring. I'm not here to ask for consent to pass a resolution, it's just an idea that I want to throw out there. We did have somebody that does council daisies and council room chambers before. I really want to do the AV upgrades. I don't necessarily want to do that if there's any desire to potentially reconfigure up here to make it more. For instance, there's no power up here. So I'm now running three devices here, including working the camera, and I have no power up here. It's just not conducive to modern day technology. So that was that. Just want to put that out there. You guys all have a copy of the proposal. It's there. Not asking for a vote, not asking for consideration today, just want to take under advisement. The next item I had is, I had wanted to know, since we are into budget talks, and we're getting Mr. Tucci, who's rounding up his sheets. I know there's been an extension of the deadline, Mr. Tucci will hit that in his report. And I don't want to miss, anybody misinterpret, this is mayor and council budget request. It's not specific budget items that we're asking for to add into the municipal budget. It's items that I think and/or we think that we really need. And things that should be incorporated into the budget. We have had some savings in the last six or seven months. We've had positions, higher positions that have left, we've had newer positions come in, much cheaper. We've had some costs that we've eliminated. There are things that I always wanted to do, and I've been mentioning this now for the last nine months, about things that I think a township our size needs. I have familiarity since I work in about 25 other municipalities. I really do want to engage the services of a public relations company that can get some of the positive news stories out there that we have, get them out there, issue press releases, that. I know smaller municipalities our size engage that, Bell never has. We did have a proposal, we did go out for bids, we had two proposals received back on that. Something I would like to explore. Newsletters. Bell really doesn't do newsletters. We do a yearly calendar, which I'm not happy with. I truly, as a designer, as somebody that's into communication, it's just not conducive. And we spend a lot of money on it. I'm recommending that we change that. Instead of spending X amount of dollars that we do that one time for that newsletter, maybe divide that into two and send out, every six months, send out our calendar for our recycling and our schedules. And then we could also add some additional pages in there that can highlight some of the new programs, new initiatives, some of the successes we've had. Wouldn't cost that much more money. We're already spending postage once a year, the second layer of postage, but a lot less pages. So things like that are things that if we can get, quantify a price, are things that I would rather ask the manager to include in the budget so that when we have these bright ideas come August and the recycling schedule has to go out, we already have a budget for it. I know a lot of other communities that do far more events for their seniors than we do. We have a senior club, they do their own thing. I work in a lot of other towns, they do, heck, they do a senior prom. I know Councilwoman DePena and I have discussed that. They do a senior prom, they do a senior barbecue, one or two events a year that township does for our seniors. A lot of our seniors are still taxpayers, they're not all in apartments. They're still paying property taxes, their kids aren't going to school. They're here, they're engaged, just giving them some kind of services. But again, these are things that we would need to budget for. We already had a price for the audio/video upgrades, Mr. Tucci has that price. If we want to pursue that, I would just caution to decide whether or not we think we need some more improvements physically here and then do those improvements first. Again, it's just about quantifying those numbers. We tend to take last year's budget, add a 2% increase to it, and then just flip it back out. I really want to put some thought into it, especially if it's things that Councilwoman Burke thinks she needs for Silver Lake or things that Deputy Mayor thinks he needs in his area, he's hearing that we need to get done. We do have a senior bus coming, that's already in the budget. Speaking back to seniors again, a very, very low-cost program that a lot of my clients do is just tax prep for seniors. A lot of seniors only have social security, maybe a retirement income. Their taxes cost nothing to do. And they have a local tax prep where they let their seniors come in and do free tax prep work. So it's things like that. We had rave reviews last year, July 1st, I'm sorry, July 4th, for our 4th of July fireworks. And we had newly been elected on the, or sworn in on the 1st. And the council, we asked this council that's currently seated here with us, and we all collectively agreed to just increase our firework budget by a couple thousand dollars. And we had a lot of rave reviews about our fireworks display. Something I want to continue going. So now's the time that we're doing our budgets, that I want to instruct the manager that whatever we paid last year for fireworks, let's pay that same amount, let's not revert backwards. Let's keep the momentum going. So it's just little things like that. And the last items that we have here are things we already discussed. We have to bond for technology. I mean, I can't tell you, and I say it every meeting, it seems like, how frustrating it is. When I come into this building, I have to take my phone and shut my Wi-Fi off. Because my phone will connect to a router that's got no internet behind it and I can't send email, I can't look at anything. I send emails to our staff here, and then I wind up sending reminder emails to our manager, to our attorney, sometimes even our clerk, because I have no faith that they actually receive them on the receiving side. So technology upgrades would be something that I want to make sure we budget for. And the last item, which ties into technology, is I definitely want to see, I'd like to see agenda software. So for instance, we keep getting packets and packets and packets of paper. It's a wasted resource for paper. We can easily accomplish this, the Board of Education does it, we can easily accomplish this digitally. There's no reason, it's not just the paper that we then throw out and shred after a meeting, but it's also resources of our police department, finding us, trying to track down Councilwoman DePena.
Sorry, I'm guilty.
Trying to track me down. It's, I mean, I like, I don't mind having them on the street anyway, pulling the car over and ringing our doorbells and it's a presence. They're not rushing to a scene of emergency, but, and I don't mind having them walk around a little bit, and they do that already, but it just, there's easier ways to do things. So if we're talking technology, let's also talk about exploring maybe that same system the school district has. So that was just really my point. It's not anything that's not normally accounted for. And again, as I mentioned to the council, and I'll mention it to a few people that are here today, when you hear that we bond for something, whether it's equipment upgrade, or furniture, or a renovation, we might bond for $50,000 or $100,000. We don't really incur or encumber that fee until we draw from it, it's like a line of credit. We might bond for $50,000 for technology, only use 38,000 of it, and we don't pay any other 12. But, so that said, council members, ward council people, we're at the budget point and we've been talking since July 1st about getting this budget in and getting it on time. Now's the time, if you can think of an event, or you can think of something that has been lacking here in this building, you've been here a lot longer than me, something that you think that we need to upgrade, whether it's little improvements to the solo sitting park, Councilwoman Burke, little things like that, rather than find the money and go to the manager in the middle of spring and say, we need flowers, or we need this, or we need that, now would be the time to at least think about it. I'm not putting you on the spot right now and saying, give him a list. I rattle off a list, but now's the time that we are doing budget requests, would be the time to do that. The department seemed to do a pretty good job of it.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, one of the things that I was just wondering about, I know we were talking a little bit about public safety, about some of the computers, about some of the vehicles and things like that. Do we bond, is that part of that $5 million or is that something else we're going to bond for?
We bonded last year for some IT upgrades and some other things for the police department. We have vehicles that are included in the bond. That's on this evening, on second reading, and we looked at which really were the 2018 requests. All right, so as we, as we continue on with the 2019 budget, we will have additional capital requests. I'll be including that.
Okay. Kind of like you said, Mayor, the department heads should be budgeting accordingly.
In my opinion, it's not, I'm not talking about the, department heads are used to supplying the sheets as you are. I'm talking about, our department heads have been here for a long time. They're used to doing what they're used to doing. We have new sets of eyes, we have new initiatives, we have arts programs, we have things that we need to see collectively as a council and new initiatives, like the art program, like the Broadway thing. So now's the time to budget, because the department heads, they get their sheets, they know their line items, they add a little bit to it every year. This is more specifically for things that we've seen, pain points that I have seen, pain points you've seen, things that we need to do to evolve. And new stuff, like obviously technology will be the role.
Technology basically will also help lower the cost of other things. Once we implement that, we'll offset that as we go forward on the ROI. So that's the numbers we have to look at.
So please, council members, again, I'm not putting anybody on the spot, not asking to do it, but in the course of the next couple of weeks, especially if we start introduction, if we can let the manager know anything specifically, we think we could obviously discuss it and talk about it, but just giving you guys that heads up. If we're good, I'll move on to the next item. Item number C. So this is, we formed a subcommittee a few meetings ago. I just want to let everybody know, this is new, kind of uncharted territory for us. Obviously, our manager gave us an indication in December that he was leaving. We then formed a council committee. I am not on the committee. The council committee consists of Councilman Cazarelli, Councilwoman DePena, and Councilman Bradiana. This council collectively decided who was going to sit on that committee. That committee then oversaw an advertisement in New Jersey League Municipalities Magazine, which is the standard for a manager search. That search lasted a month. We had about 12, yes?
Yes.
12 resumes came in, the committee has met. The committee's task, and this was their own desire, they whittled it down to, I believe, five or six of the top applicants. You know, this is, and I'm speaking now to, I guess, my council colleagues, this is uncharted territory for us. So I would, and I've had this conversation with the town attorney. For those of you who don't know, this former government, we're, we get to hire a manager and we get to hire a town attorney. That's it. Everything else, the town manager handles day-to-day operations. So this is something that we can do. Traditionally, we're not above the personnel, per se. Traditionally, we don't have the ability to interview people and ask questions. This is now our opportunity to do that. And we now have some resumes, we're going to go into executive session to discuss the details of that, that's technically personnel. But this is our opportunity now to meet with, talk to, it's okay. I cleared that through the town attorney. We can now make phone calls to these applicants, we can interview them on the phone, we can discuss things, we can ask them specific questions, we can know where we want to go. I do think this is a great opportunity for Bell that we have the ability now that a professional manager, somebody with the experience, to be full-time present here, whether it's 8 to 4, 9 to 5, somebody that can steer us through the next couple of years of where we need to be. Whether we start talking about redevelopment projects, or we start talking about other items, it would be in our best interest to have a professional in here to do that. And that's, I'm happy with the progress so far. I think it's exactly what we decided, the direction we wanted to take. And if the committee, or one person or somebody from the committee can just give maybe a quick overview without going into specifics, because we're going to discuss that in executive, of kind of where we're at as of today.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I just, to inform everyone, I wanted to make sure that everyone understood the criteria that we used to address the 12 applicants that we received. So we divided the groups into people that had municipal experience or government experience and those who are coming from the private sector and who did have the qualities to fill in that position. And we had the job description and we had a whole bunch of names. No knowledge of who is whom, just very specific and objective in terms of what we were doing. So the piles were separated into government experience and just private sector. Then we looked into people who had budget and financial experience and those who were within our salary range. And what that means is we also looked into the opportunity for growth. We did not want to bring in someone who would be great, but it's pretty much maxed that. We want someone who would be able to be invested in our community. As the mayor expressed before, we want someone that would stay here and that would grow with us. So if we went with a fantastic person but who is at the top, then there's no room for growth and maybe no, a very short-term commitment. So those were the three aspects that we issued. And we did want to ask as a committee to the manager, if you might be able to maybe provide us with more specifics as to your day-to-day responsibilities that might not necessarily fit into what we put in the job description. But we were able through that, we're able to look at five specific resumes. And I just want to make very clear for everyone, we have not met any of these people, there have been no interviews. We narrowed it down to five based on that objective criteria. However, in your packets you've been provided with, thank you Kelly for doing that, we provided you with everyone. You can at your leisure look at all of them, but we did want to tell you what we did and how we chose those three people. And then having that information for the manager will help us be a bit more specific as to, from those five people, how we can move forward with questioning and interview process. Okay, any questions?
Will you bring the five in?
We're going to do that, yeah. Yeah, we're going to discuss that in executive and then we're going to do that. Yeah, oh yeah.
That's it.
Sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So Vinnie, you're also on the committee, anything to add?
Yeah, no, well, the committee is basically over now. So now it's a full council interview process. We'd like to give everyone maybe 10 minutes each on the first interview and then a second round, if they make it to the top two or three, a second round, more intense questioning, maybe half hour each for the top two or three after that point.
I do think that was an excellent recommendation from the committee that Councilwoman DePena mentioned, because Mar, you may have day-to-day opportunities. For instance, Bell doesn't have a CFO, a full-time CFO. We don't really have a full-time in-house purchasing agent. So you might be, you are basically acting as purchasing agent. You might have duties that a candidate may be coming from another town, as town manager didn't have. So that's actually an excellent idea. Anything that's outside of the traditional scope of, something unique to Bell, I guess, is what I would call it. There's a lot of unique development. Councilman, you're on the committee.
We had really good meetings together and we followed the criteria just like Councilwoman said, and here we are.
Deputy Mayor?
Kelly, you can answer. League of Municipalities, we advertised on the website. Where is that, is that a seminar? Because I know we had somebody from Ohio.
Yeah, it's a website, it's the website.
So it's all over.
So you're going to pull from all of them?
We can pull from all of them.
But you didn't have somebody from Ohio.
We didn't. Councilman, we advertised on the website and we were also in the League of Municipalities magazine. We also had it on our website too, I think. It was also on our website. So we're going to discuss this further, council, in executive. So that said, we already did room number number five, it was the presentation. Our next item is executive session, so I want to need a motion to go to executive session. Unfortunately, we are going to have to clear the room. We are going to try and make it back rather quickly, because we do have a public hearing set for 7:00. So we're not going to make that, but we're going to try and be back for that. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Set. We have a motion, can I take clerk, call it all?
Councilmember Cazarelli, DePena, Bradiana, Nattori, Robel.
Yes. I have a motion.
Motion to come out.
I have a motion to come out of executive, can I get a second? We have a motion, a second, come out of executive session, clerk, call it all.
Councilmember Cazarelli, DePena, Bradiana, Nattori.
Yes, I agree.
Robel.
Yes.
Strummer. Yes, Mayor Bellin.
Yes. Next up, we have a public hearing for a presentation. Actually, does he want to read it?
Sure. We have a grant application for the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Local Government Storage Chipper for the vital range reserve project.
Mar? So.
Mayor, council, this is, this is an initiative of the reconstituted Green Team, Bell Green Team. And with us this evening, we have some of the members in the team. And I'd like to, with your permission, call up Gabby to give a brief overview of what this application will include.
Gabby, I'm going to have you come forward to speak clearly since we are live streaming. I just want everybody to know, this is a public hearing for a grant application. This is just the application, all of it, an application that town should have to submit.
This mayor, if I might, this is a requirement of the DEP Green Acres Program to have a public hearing prior to actually submitting the application.
We're not allocating any money. We're not advocating allocating any money at this point, we're just making an application. So Gabby?
Yes.
We're already half hour late, so I need a clip, note version from you.
All right, so very quickly, from the Green Team, the Green Team is part of the Sustainable New Jersey Program. Sustainable New Jersey says that in order to participate in the initiatives and earn your points, you must form a Green Team, which actually the mayor and the council, you are the Green Team. You designated the two liaisons, Vin Cazarelli and Steven Rovelli, who I sort of feed the information and updates to give to you all. And the Green Team again works with all of the community members, the clubs, the organizations, which is a great partnership. The program is phenomenal because it really got. The program is phenomenal because it really guides you to become sustainable.
All this paperwork is not green, by the way. We just turned on the green, telling you all this.
Hurry up and update your system. I could have done a PowerPoint. Everyone could have shared.
All this, let's just shred it. Hopefully, you're going to organize and shred that.
All right. So I'm still going here.
Go ahead.
Also, on the Sustainable New Jersey, which we briefed upon the last meeting, was the Sustainable Schools. So they too develop a Green Team for the schools, and I've met with some of their Green Team members. So they're very excited to work together with us, as well as scouts, organizations, like I said, community members and so on.
Gabby, I just want to just qualify you real quick. I work for the...
I work at the New Jersey Sports and Exposition Authority, which formerly the New Jersey Meadowlands Commission in Lynnhurst, New Jersey, with the Parks and the Nature Trails and the visiting school groups. And that's most of the information that you have. I've been with them for 25 years. I started out as a formal science, informal science educator, and I've also done professional development with teachers, basically how to integrate science curriculum into your studies. Because most teachers, science is not the favorite subject, but we do have specialists when you get to the middle school and the high school. And so you see, most of those packets there with those photos are, believe it or not, our Belleville students visiting me on my job in Lynnhurst. And so that's why we're so passionate about this project and about having a little nature preserve in a little area in the township of Belleville where our students, our Boy Scouts, our Girl Scouts and members of the community can come and participate and do small projects. The project is small and we kept it small, a little nature trail, a little pathway, some native vegetation, pollinator meadows, native shrubs and native trees. We kept the stadium scene, we kept the baseball, the old diamond open, so that we could have an open area where we could do community events, small events, lectures, small shows, plays, dramas. It could be almost whatever you envision as the mayor and council are doing there. And then the backdrop would be that beautiful, the nature trail and area. And I'm just going to read, you know, just to wrap it up, something that I'm submitting on behalf of the Green Team, which should really give you the idea, the gist of it all. The Better Belleville Green Team would like to express their commitment to this exciting project, which will turn underutilized area into a Belleville jewel. This kind of enhancement project would provide a unique community space for presentations and events amongst the backdrop of native metals planted with mixtures of flowers and grasses. A meandering pathway would welcome a person to explore and learn about the beauty and wildlife living there. Nature areas within the parks will be, nature areas within the parks and trails have become sources of communities' identity and pride. The effects of these areas are magnified when communities use trails and greenways to highlight and provide access to other resources. Urban green spaces support recreational opportunities and improve public health. They alleviate some of the emotional stresses of life. The quiet enjoyment of nature soothes the monotony of our daily lives. Healthy natural areas can offer a substantial economic benefit to our communities. This would be the beginning of how Belleville could continue to pursue open spaces and projects such as this. So to me, it's just a small step in stone in doing more in the future.
Thank you. So again, we can see from the presentation that we have, we can probably leave all of the clerks, so it's on file. This was the old pistol range, what used to be a ball field, has not been a ball field in many, many years. Personally, tired of seeing a dilapidated field that's not maintained. It's a flood area, it's set down, which is why it floods, it was wiped out during a hurricane. And it's to the point where it's not maintained at all, so why not turn it wild and make a nature preserve there, which is also going to help us for all of our points and everything else, for open space and everything else.
And that's an entry point coming from Notley.
It is. So rather than seeing a dilapidated field that's not maintained, you're going to see beautiful meadow grass and butterflies.
Like a pocket park.
Right. And this is just the application.
I just want to say, Gabby helped me a lot with Kent Carrigan. This Kent Carrigan was a mess at one time, and it's gotten better, but she did a great job there and we fully support this.
Does anybody in the public have any specific questions on this particular presentation and/or application?
Mr. Frank Anton. Is the baseball field still going to be maintained yet?
No. Baseball field has not been maintained in a long time.
Well, I like this project. Eighteen years as trustee of the Safe River Coalition, I was involved with doing many of these around, it's a safe river basin. The problem is, we don't have enough recreation space. Now, this project, there are other locations. The, one of them is the Great Lawn. The Great Lawn is under redevelopment plans, designated as open space. It would be great, it would be great, number one, that's a landmark in Belleville. And you come here from Newark and others to see that. To see that area fixed up, like Chief Reprovision, is great. That would be another one. Another one is a piece of our town property, which suspiciously disappeared, which I'll follow through, is, we've got a piece of property, 55 by 900.
Mr. Frank Anton, I need you to speak on this particular application.
Yeah, this one here, I recommend it on other sites, the Great Lawn.
We don't own that property, Mr. Frank Anton. We don't own that property.
The Great Lawn?
Right.
It's designated as open space under redevelopment plan.
We don't own it, Mr. Frank Anton. I need you to speak on this particular application.
So we can work with the other national councils. There's other ones. The Sitting Park, that you did over there on Mill Street there. We can expand that, we could right back in the Sitting Park and all along is the Marsh Canal, our property that people have been approaching it. And it's a perfect for a walking trail, all the way to Clonmoss Hospital, that's a site. We take it back, again, when I was in office, we got one back from a person who approached on it illegally. So we haven't got any fields. I mean, you people talk about recreation. That field was maintained fine. I was in office, told me I had to give it up as the outdoor pistol range were abandoned. And that's why we converted it to a baseball field. And for many years, it was maintained as a baseball field. And then you let it go. And just as an aside there, the back of that field, the house in the back, I don't know if anybody noticed it, but I noticed you right past, the guy did work, dumped all this concrete on our property. The back of that field, like say it was center field, has tons of rocks that that house dumped on our property. So I hope we're not going to get after him, let him have to remove it. But there's other sites, I don't want to see given up, but this is a good project, another location. We need, you've got new sports people coming to these meetings, begging that there's no place to practice, no place to play. So you guys are for recreation and now we're losing one of our recreation space. And it's a good, and ironically, Mr. Two G, the director of recreation, right next to it, not 10 feet away, but right next to it, beautiful recreation trails in Notley. It's, I've been telling you since you've been on the fire council, it's an embarrassment.
It is.
That we got right next to a great recreation site.
I took a video of it during my campaign.
We got there. So that's why I'm asking, I like this project.
That field hasn't been used, though, in five, six, seven years.
No, I'll go back. It's, I mean, it kept flooding.
Twelve years that field has not been used.
Yeah, because of neglect. Because of neglect. And if you need some fill, I'll tell you where to get fill. There's plenty free fill, it's down there on the Corlent Street. You know, we've got a mound, we could repeat that mound.
Thank you, Mr. Frank Anton.
So please find another site for the other project.
I just have one quick question about this particular parcel of land. If I remember correctly, about two years ago, the council made some commitment to turn this particular area into a park for special needs children, children who are dealing with autism, et cetera. Mr. Two G and the four board council members can correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't that the case, wasn't there some sort of...
So we didn't get a grant, we applied for a grant for that.
Actually, the grant, the person who was interested in doing that facility obtained a grant in Bluefield and set up the league in Bluefield. That league is no longer active, though.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So there's no more...
Motion to...
Real close public presentation.
Motion to close button.
Just moving on. Okay, that concludes the public hearing, then. We're going to move on to...
So we're going to apply?
So, well, there's a resolution.
Okay.
We're going to move on to item number eight, approval amendment.
Combined conference regular meeting at February 11.
Make a motion?
Set.
Councilmember Cazarelli? DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
State House Bar.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes. Board of Manager?
Yes. First item, business mayor is to inform everyone that the state has postponed the budget, the statutory budget introduction date to March 31st or the next meeting following that, so we will be abiding by that new timeline. The DPW on February 20th, 28th, March 1st, March 2nd, and March 3rd, either salted the streets, plowed the streets, or plowed and salted the streets, depending on what the situation was with the snowstorm. The water department on February 25th, at the dead end of Park Street, replaced a water main, 13 feet of six-inch main. Also on the 25th, we had a sewer lateral that needed to be repaired and a water service that needed to be replaced on Union Avenue, Division Avenue, we installed a new one in service. At the Soho Hospital, we had a water main break on March 11th, and we replaced 12 feet of six-inch main and a gate valve. On Forest Street, we replaced a water service. Throughout the town, we've taken down several trees, we've trimmed a bunch of trees, we filled about 50 potholes, and we replaced four street signs. That's all I have there.
Question to the manager, anybody? I have a question. Alternate side of street parking, when do we suspend that? Is that an automatic thing or is it arbitrary?
It's somewhat arbitrary, depending on the weather, but it seems like it's going to be coming up every short...
But as of now, it's still enforced?
I have a couple of questions for the manager. Manager, the firehouse doors on Washington Avenue, we did the walkthrough, I know they were broken, I know we fixed the motors and stuff. Will you have any timelines on that? Because there is a, the big door is actually...
We authorize that improvement and the former chief was supposed to follow through with that. I'll follow up with the new chief and I'm sure we'll get that done.
How about, I see the DPW director shaking his head.
We got it, it should be covered in it next week.
Okay, so he did. All right.
Thank you.
And the fire chief is here, by the way. We have everybody here.
Sorry, I didn't see everybody. So...
Thank you. And Mauro, just another question. This past week and last week, driving up and down Washington Avenue, stopping, finding meters that are broken. But I also, it really caught my eye, right? So I went to a meter that was broken, hey, it was my benefit, but bad for the town, right? So I come in and then I start looking, and I still noticed, like, that's a quarter for an hour, right? I go to Montclair, I go to another, it's 75 cents. Well, it's 25, I'm sorry, it's 75 cents for an hour, so it's 25 cents for every 20 minutes. So, I mean, I just did some real fast calculations and it's like, for one car, if you're doing it for 60 minutes at 25 cents, it comes out to be $18 a week, $3 daily, $18 a week, $72 a month, $864 annually, one car. If you raised it to 75 cents for that same duration of 60 minutes, it would be $9 daily, $54 a month, I'm sorry, weekly, $2.16 a month, and $2,592 annually. Multiply that times, how many meters do we have in the, not only on the streets, but I'm saying in the parking lots? I mean, substantial, right? So I don't know if it ever, if there ever was something put in play, or do we ever think about looking at, looking at different meters?
We have, I've sat in with the police chief.
Actually, the police chief, Chief Minikini is investigating that. I know he's looked at several, some that actually, one meter which would encompass three spots, all right, with cameras on them and also viewfinders for advertisement.
Two meters are already on.
Yeah, but they're very, very, very expensive and the split between what the company would get and what the town would get, I'm not so sure was in our favor. And I know the chief is also investigating meters similar to the ones that are in Montclair where you can actually put your credit card in.
Right.
Which is very convenient, because nowadays, a lot of folks don't carry...
He's really managing it on a ride for the town.
So I'll get an update, I'll get an update from the chief to report back.
Now, I'll bring the other one up with the committee.
I do have a question for the, first, I just want to say thank you for providing me with the detailed budget for the Recreation Department. We still continue to address certain concerns in regards to that, but I did want to ask you in regards to the status of the stigma-free signs. We passed a resolution and I inquire about pricing so that we can post, Belleville is a stigma-free town all around in different places and...
Right. I think as I may have related in an email, we're waiting for some mockups, all right? And I know our traffic division was looking into that along with the chief, so we could select the ones that we want. I know there's several around in different towns in there, as soon as we, we'll lower those up.
Great, thank you.
Any other question?
One question. And I'm going to need your help on this. Could we put together a plan somewhere for the next year to take care of the varsity field, to maybe get a cover for the end field for next, like, maybe we pull it in October, cover it? Because what I'm seeing there is...
Yeah, I know, I know, Mauro, you irrigated it, right? And then it has some plants.
Yes, we had one deep-tine, what they call deep-tine irrigation, where they actually pull holes, because after a while, the soil compacts down so hard that it's almost like concrete and the water can't perk down. So we did one, we weren't able to get, it's an eight-inch, it's an eight-inch drilling, so to speak, all right? We couldn't get through eight inches. So we already have a contract in place that as soon as the weather breaks, the company's coming back to do another deep-tine irrigation and also to make some improvements to that field so that it's playable for the spring. And then once, once the season is over, we're going to do a complete reconstruction of that whole horse street base.
And then I have an update too, based on our, on our meeting that we had, so I can share it back.
Yeah, that would be in your committee report.
In the committee report.
Good. Anybody else? Everybody? No? Committee report. Okay, so next up, we have a report of the mayor, I'm going to go quick, I know we're going real late here. So in my mayor's report this week, I just want to quickly recap, I know I asked more about the street sweeper, I want to quickly just recap, this past week, we had our rabies clinic, I drove past the firehouse and I saw dogs and all kinds of animals. It was very busy, it was nice to see that we could offer that benefit to our residents. Councilwoman Burke may mention it, but I was at the Soho Sitting Park dedication on Saturday, it was a lovely event. We recently had our Black Issue Month recap event, and that was an amazing event, the Belleville Public Library, the first-ever joint venture between the council, or the township, I should say, and the library board. It was a wonderful event, it was a lecture, it was thought-provoking, it was edgy, it was after-hours, it was everything that we thought it would be, and we had an excellent time at that. I would love to have more events like that in the near future. You just heard, we had a public hearing on the Rifle Range Preserve, that will be moving forward, hopefully. forward, hopefully. We, I've had a conversation with the manager, and I would love to have a conversation with even the school district, about additional recreation space, because that is really a bond, or a swamp. It floods a lot. So we've talked about maybe even cooperating with the Board of Education to get some funding when the county opens up open space money, maybe to turf number eight school, if the school district is so inclined to work with us on that, maybe even Fairway Park or something like that. So we do have our eye on additional recreation space, and we're gonna be hoping, every couple of years, the county opens up open space money. They haven't done it in a couple of years, so it's coming now, and we intend on pushing our way to the front of that line and making sure Bellville gets our fair share of that. You might have seen on the executive session of the agenda that we had a slight typo in that, it was council of Bellville versus the library, that really should have been a slash and not a verse. We were just kind of having a conversation about that. It's not a new item, we've discussed that item before. All parties agree, and I'm not saying anything out of line, the library owes us three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, okay? So for all my bean counters out there, for all my advocates out there, it's a tax point. They owe it to us. They just were never billed. So because they weren't billed, since 2009, we went back to, they weren't billed for something, and they didn't pay us. And they have that money. And we're just interested in collecting our money. Again, it's a tax point, and we're always looking at tax points because it relates to payments of taxes. So we are in negotiations with them. Nothing that I just said, the fact that the money is owed, the fact that it wasn't billed, and the fact it wasn't paid, is in dispute. We all agree with that, we're just looking to collect our money on that one. We did have a, in our caucus portion of that, we did discuss our manager search, we don't need to go back from that. There is a communication on the agenda today, it's an additional refund that we received from Atlantic City. There's also a communication on the agenda today from the state of New Jersey, asking us to participate with them about UCC and some different construction code issues. They actually asked us to participate with them if we know of any violations that relate to UCC. It's not something that we handle, since it's a state agency, they just asked us to send those violations to them, or those complaints, I should say. Upcoming events, we are preparing a restaurant week, it'll be Bellville's first-ever restaurant week. We've already been in contact with, I believe, twelve different restaurants, asking for their participation. We do not have a date yet, it'll either be a seven-day or fifteen-day event. I've communicated with Gabby, as you all saw here today. We're planning an Earth Day cleanup event. Earth Day falls on a Monday. That Friday, we're gonna have an assembly, I believe, at one of the schools, and that Saturday, I think we're looking at a town-wide cleanup day, where we get everybody out, spring cleaning, rake the leaves out, mulch, do all that great stuff, let's get the community pride going. On that day, Mr. Manager, I will be bringing up, I would love to have you give an order to dispatch Department of Public Works personnel to go throughout the town and take down all these signs that are on all these poles. There's poles that have two, or three, and four signs on them about, we buy houses, we buy junk cars, and this, and that. They are getting clever, they're fifteen feet up, we're gonna need ladders to get some of them. Some poles have two or three on them, I can't stand it anymore, so maybe on our community clean day, we'll bring DPW guys in with trucks and ladders and go after that stuff. Councilman DePenny will probably mention it in her report, but we are planning a first-ever Women's Empowerment Breakfast on Saturday, April sixth, is our color run that you heard about during our caucus event, and the library. I'm pleased to be able to kick off National Library Week with a Monday Morning with the Mayor, that'll be on April eighth. Other than that, I am done with my very quick mayor's report. We'll start with any council committee report that we did not discuss already in caucus. Do you understand? We did IT already in caucus. Councilman Cazarelli, we covered our manager search. You want to touch on anything?
Just the events really briefly. Thank you. So Women's History Month is March, and like the mayor mentioned, we are hosting our first-ever Women's Empowerment Breakfast, and we're excited to focus on women's health, mental and physical health. We are doing this in partnership with the Bellville Public Schools, and some of our sponsors are Sanitas, Clara Mass, and Horizon. So we will have some experts, and it will be a panel, there will be also breakfast served. We do, it's free, but we do require that you RSVP at the mayor's office so that we can know that you are coming. We're very excited for this event. Also, in the month of April, is Autism Awareness Month, so we just want to remind everyone of our color run. Once again, it is not a competitive race, it's a fun run where children and families are going to be sprayed with powder, it's cornstarch, which is completely non... We actually had a meeting yesterday, we discussed this with, we're working together with our police department to make sure that everyone's safe, and also with our fire department in order to be able to do a nice, fun cleanup afterwards as well. I do want to mention, I know there was some confusion as to, our police department is hosting a fundraiser event that day in the afternoon. You will have more than enough time to attend both events. The police unity fundraiser is that day from one to six. I hope to also be there and be able to support both events. So they will not conflict nine to about eleven-thirty, and our police event is in the afternoon. Okay?
Good. Before I kick it down this end of the day, so one last thing that I forgot to mention, Councilman Cazarelli actually sent me this message, and I read the article. Our school district received an extra $2.3 million in funding from Governor Murphy's office. That's $2.3 million added to their budget, an extra funding. I plan on doing my part as mayor and representing the municipality, to hopefully have a conversation with the superintendent there, to see maybe if the school district would be willing to offset the referendum payment with that extra money, since it was basically found money, money they didn't expect, and they'd been operating with a budget that was $2.3 million less. Potentially, I just want to ask whether or not the superintendent and/or the school district would be willing to maybe obligate some of that money to pay down our debt service, because as we now know, for the next twenty-two years or so, we all as individual taxpayers have anywhere between $200 and $350 a year payment that goes to pay that referendum. That was before we had this extra funding. So that would be a conversation I'd like to have with the school district, and that's great news, by the way. Anybody else on this end?
Yeah, I don't know, the committee. As far as the committee report, the Jordan program was very successful, it will be concluding this month. Maro and I spoke, we're gonna probably do a summer program also, and then you and I spoke about the art program, and we do the fall production to get some of the kids that were involved in the art program to work on scenery and combine the two. And as far as budgeting, Maro, we do need to budget for that production in the fall. You know the numbers, we could, based on, you know, your department knowledge, but we are going to need to budget for that.
Councilman Burke, you want to touch real quick on the park dedication?
Well, I think you...
I may just mention it, knowing you were gonna say it, but, okay.
Well, we had a couple of complaints because not everybody was included on there, and they did not get flyers, and the girls were not too happy about that, because they had all their...
All right, well, then that you need to address with them. Don't look at me when you say that, that's a complaint for the manager's office. I had nothing to do with the park, I showed up.
Okay, I guess that's it then.
Okay. Councilman Graziano?
Yes, I just wanted to share with everybody that we had a nice recreation meeting, unfortunately...
No. Thank you.
Councilman DePenny was there, Maro, Tucci, myself, and Mr. Augustus.
I've sat in as a designated for Councilman Burke.
Right, so some takeaways that we took, we had a really nice conversation, and Mr. Tucci and Tommy, we discussed, all of us, about a booster club to help raise funds for all of the different programs, along with now starting something that's never been in Bellville before, pay-to-play, right? Starting some type of pay-to-play, not astronomical numbers, just a little bit to help fund and help them get to the next level in playing really competitive sports across all leagues. Some leagues do it today, some sports do it today, I know soccer, wrestling, some baseball, but to get a fair cross-the-board, all of them. So that's something that we discussed, still more to come, but I wanted to share that with everybody, and I know it's in good hands with Maro and Mr. Augustus.
Okay, that wraps up our committee reports. We're gonna move on to communications.
I have one quick question. I kind of read that state letter a little differently, and I think that we should actually revisit the committees, especially relative to the statutory committees and some of the language that we used. I don't know how we would do that, would we do it with a recension, would we do it with a modification? But I gotta say, I'm kind of concerned on that letter.
So our attorney drafted the resolution that you're speaking on, you know?
Yeah, I gotta be honest with you, Steve, I don't agree with you.
You don't agree with what?
I don't agree with us having oversight on statutory ordinances.
Me too.
I think Murray's the same one, so what I would like to do as a council is I'd like to revisit the language and talk about that, because based upon what I'm seeing from the state, we need to come up with a better review of that. I have no problem with the other committees we created, but I do have a problem with anything statutory, and this is something, my understanding was that a committee was for us under the Faulkner Act, the ability for us to communicate with the department heads and actually facilitate and help them. It wasn't to be investigative, it wasn't to be punitive, and especially wasn't to be on the statutory side, and I said, that's under the Faulkner...
But it's not, though, if you read the resolution we passed, we don't do any of that.
Yeah, but you say investigative, you do.
Well, that actually...
That's exactly what the Faulkner Act says.
Then we disagree, because I don't, especially, you can't tell me that we supersede...
Well, it's not an opinion of mine.
We do not supersede the state. It's a statutory, what you said about planning and zoning is under the statutory, that's what they're saying here in this letter.
They're saying UCC.
What the letter says is that...
The Office of Regulatory Affairs, do you want, should I read it?
I can't.
The Office of Regulatory Affairs has received the above-referenced resolution, which will be utilized to appoint committees consisting of council members, the mayor, the township attorney, and up to three private citizens, to review the policies and procedures of various departments of the township of Bellville. Said resolution includes the Department of Planning and Development, which would include the Building Code Construction Department. The office is concerned that said resolution may improperly impinge upon the function of the Building Code Department as explained below. And then they go into that, and I'm not gonna...
They go into UCC, we're not investigating UCC.
But that's the Building Code Department that we have under there.
To me, that's a warning from the state.
That's a warning from the state.
There's no question.
And also, I've heard, I've gotten warnings from the county as well. You want to stay away from statutory departments, you know, police, fire, the cap of the courts, UCCs.
Well, it's just that, that language in the ordinance comes directly from the Faulkner Act, directly from the Faulkner Act. I took it directly from the Faulkner Act. So I just want you to, I got the letter...
I agree, but I prefer it differently. I'm just saying that.
I got the letter, I'm going to respond to the Department of Community Affairs, and my letter is going to say to them that I'd like to speak to them, and if they have to meet with us, that's fine too. The intention of that ordinance, and it was discussed multiple times...
The resolution.
The resolution was discussed multiple times here, and the intention was not to infringe upon anything. This mayor and council has absolutely no ability to do what the Department of Community Affairs says.
They think that's what it's gonna do, that's, I mean, that's basically what they're saying, is based upon their reading of that resolution, that's the way they feel it is. And I think we should just reword it to be safe.
Okay, you can suggest, you're right to suggest any, how you want to reword it, but I can tell you this, that the, number one, the intention of all of you here wasn't to infringe upon the planning and development. That's number one.
We know what our intentions are.
But now, every, based on that letter, every complaint that comes into this building about that department has to be sent down to the Department of Community Affairs.
I disagree. I disagree with you completely. In fact, at that point...
Well, read the rest of the letter, because that's what directs you to do.
I understand if there's a complaint about the department, you should do that, but on the other side of that is, there's another context here that I'm not gonna discuss in public that I would like to discuss in private, because of what you just said. Is that okay?
Sure.
Thanks.
We're moving on to communications.
A request received from St. Anthony's Church for permission to conduct a feast in honor of St. Anthony on May thirty-first, June first, and June second, a procession through the streets on June second, and for the vendor fees to be waived for the vendors of the feast. We need a motion.
There's something that we do, yes?
Every year.
Need a motion?
Make motion.
Motion made, Saint Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePenny?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Grovel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Communication B. Letter received from the state of New Jersey, Department of Community Affairs concerning the importance of committees to review policies and procedures of various departments in the township of Bellville. The Department of Community Affairs feels having a committee to review the policies and procedures of the township of Planning and Development, which would include the building and construction of the department may improperly impair its function. C, check this C from the Hard Rock Hotel and Casino, the amount of $1,687.6 for a refund from the 2018 League of Municipalities Convention.
Ordances?
Ordinance number one, for introduction and ordinance of the township of Bellville, amendment chapter eight, traffic section eight-point-one, eight-dash-one-point-eleven, prohibited left turns.
Need a motion?
Second.
Motion made, Saint Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePenny?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Grovel?
No.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Ordinance number three, for introduction, ordinance approving the financial agreement for room-term tax exemption by between the township of Bellville and Silver Lake Urban Renewal LLC.
Need a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made, Saint Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePenny?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Grovel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Ordinance number four, for introduction, and ordinance to amend, ordinance number thirty-three, thirty-two, entitled, and ordinance adopting rules and regulations governing the employment of these sponsors for extrajudy details within the township of Bellville.
Need a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made, Saint Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePenny?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Grovel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
B, ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one, for public hearing, ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation in the amount of $50,000 for preparation of an updated master plan in and by the township of Bellville, the county of Estes, New Jersey.
Need a motion open for public hearing?
Second.
Motion made, Saint Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePenny?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Grovel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Mr. Frank Tantone?
Yeah, we just updated the master plan about a year ago. What are we doing now? With this $50,000 more?
I'm sorry?
I thought we updated it ten years ago.
Statutory duty every ten years, it was done in 2016 or '17. The planning board is revisiting it.
With the modifications?
They're revisiting it.
For what reason?
The planning board probably answered that question for it. The planning board can answer that question.
The planning board initiated this?
The planning board does the master plan.
Yeah, I know that, but upon the recommendation of the council?
This is just the additional funds, we already did this, Maro, didn't we? This process is already well on its way. This is just the funds to pay. This process is well on its way already.
Well, if it's to increase, and again, you earlier stated, there's 38,000 people in Bellville. The last I heard, it was 36,000. Did it increase to 1,000? Because 36,000 is too much. It's 18,000 people per square mile, which is extreme density. So this is to increase it even further, is that your purpose? Increase to 100 units per acre?
I have no purpose in this, Mr. Frank Tantone.
You have no intention to do that?
I have no purpose. This is an update of the master plan, the overall master plan.
Yeah, it's the one I just opened from the council, I mean, we're increasing the density all over town. And you know, shit, once I leave my mouth, they're talking about this 38,000 people per square mile, and now we want to increase the density even further. It's unsustainable. And again, I don't want to read them again, I broke you up, the state article, they're now seeing the tax effect and all this development that's killing the state, Montclair, and just last week, now Jersey City is rethinking all their development. My wife and I are friends in the Lowes, we can't go there this year, we can't get nowhere near it, traffic jam, you can't park over there, but just last week, there's another article, Jersey City is now rethinking this open development, which is happening all over the state. So I hope you guys consider that, you know, this is, was, we hope it, the state, a nicer burdened community.
Anybody else? Motion closed?
Motion closed, pass for final adoption.
Yes.
Orders approved. Orders number two for public hearing, ordinance providing various government improvements in and by the township of Bellville and the county of Estes, New Jersey, appropriating five million, five hundred and ninety thousand dollars, therefore authorizing five million, three hundred and ten dollars, five million, three hundred and ten, five hundred dollars bonds are noted to the township to finance part of the cost they're up.
Make a motion open for public?
Second.
Motion made, Saint, Clark, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosavelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumeloburk?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Of the commentary, no.
That was public comments for the second ordinance.
On the ordinance?
On the ordinance, yes.
Make a motion to close and move for final adoption?
Second.
Motion made, Saint, Clark, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosavelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumeloburk?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Orders approved.
Do we want to defeat the thing that's on the table?
We could do that.
You still have to have the public hearing.
No, then you just let it die.
Let it die. Make a motion open for the comments?
Second.
Motion made, second, the public comments, Clark, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosavelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumeloburk?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Orders approved. Motion to close, Paul.
Okay. Mr. Frank Tantone.
That's all you have to say. The, uh, the council and Graziano, regardless of the meters, again, remember it's a blue collar town, but you're already, there's several things you can do. Ask you to pave that lot across the street that's sitting there thirty years, you'll get ten cars out of here. Parking lot, uh, the sidewalk parking lot requires two, at the most, handicapped parking spaces. We've got like ten of them out there, and we have government employees parking, they can park all day, and we're losing money from the meters because then they don't pay in the, all of them. So right there, you can pick up eight meters that will pay. The other thing, you're already ripping people off. Some of my customers already found out, there's some new meters you're putting on. These new meters, the people go out there and it's, I parked there and there's twenty minutes left. This guy comes and he puts a quarter in, it takes the twenty minutes off. People don't realize that. I don't know if you know that.
No, you don't.
The other thing, some of these new meters, I was there an hour working on one of my machines, I knew my hour was up, I went to put in a meter, and it says fourteen. I said, fourteen, the meter must be off. Luckily, I turned around, looked at it, there's a little negative sign. What happens? The meters count down, but you can't see it, it's so small, so the people think they got fourteen minutes left. And, and they got it. So we're already tricking people in there, where you can make money. The other thing is, I parked over here, Washington Avenue, I'm parked at a pole, no meter. Go down, one dollar store. There's four or five poles that have been taken away. Why? Go up and, you know, and down and look there. But again, please don't put those immunity meters, but people are aggravated enough, you've got to walk a half a block to use that, you know. So it's a blue collar town, let's keep the quarter and, and help the people. Um, there's a, I'm making sure tonight. We got one, we're going to be paving this spring, I hope, right?
Right.
The roads, the money was appropriated?
No.
Well, I'm going to give you a picture. The top one is Home Street. At the time, uh, Mayor Degory was the mayor, and I complained, the way they're paving it, they just put an asphalt over the road, they mill it, nobody fills the potholes. The other one is another town in Exeter County, where I was doing a kitchen, I won there, paving a road. It happened to the roller operator, mother lived in Bellville, I wound up in a conversation with him, and we thought, I said, that's the way you pave streets, not in Bellville. He said, tell me about it. He said, we do the work in Bellville. Bellville does them all on the cheap. Now, about three weeks ago, when I found this, I've got, I had this picture, I drove up to that town. It's from the oh-three, almost twenty years, this is still in excellent condition. Go look at Home Street. And, and look at the embarrassment of way we paved streets. No pack coating, no milling, and when they mill, nobody's paying attention to how they mill. And there's a, the top one is how Bellville paved roads, that don't last a year, and right there, in fact, Mayor Degory's child was playing, uh, one of the games there at Clement Field, and my daughter was playing, and I took them out there. I said, this the way to save streets? He said, what do you want me to do? But that's an embarrassment. Every time you pave a street, within a week, I mean, within a year, they're cracked. The other thing is, you pave half a street, before the paver paves the other street, you're supposed to pack coat, put tar on that edge, so when you pave it, it sticks together, like glue. You don't do that. And within less than a year, especially if they do it near the winter, it shrinks, and we've got an awkward crack. Go look at every one of these streets, a set of cracks, it's open up, the water gets in and spreads. So if we've got to do less streets, fine, but let's do the money and do it right. What they did, that street, they milled it, then they paved a thin one inch, you see the subwork, and they rolled it to make sure all the potholes were filled and flattened out, and then they put the two and a half inch tub. It's, twenty years later, that, I just drove up there last Sunday, that street is good. Go look at Home Street. I mean, New Street. So please, let's do it right this year, you know.
Who else?
Do you want this back, Mr. Frank Tantone?
Huh?
Do you want this back?
No, I got plenty of copies.
It's not part of the green team.
Marion?
Yeah, Marion, drive nine-five Bell Street. Just, uh, quickly, there's an article in today's Star Ledger, it says, forget renting, homeowners is back in style, the saying about the once rapid growth in renters' households has stalled. According to Zillow, it says that the trend is now changing, that people are wanting more housing, the millennials, they claim, of course, are running away from it. Uh, the other thing I'm going to ask you again, if I'm going to ask you every meeting till you do it, is the agendas, when they go online, the backup information, maybe in the future, I could stop asking you, I could read all that stuff online. I know there's a lot of pages, but scanning is easy. I scan documents every day, I sometimes have to scan back a hundred pages to, to lenders, and if I could do it at home, you've got more, you've got better equipment than me, so we'll leave it at that.
We just talked about that.
I wouldn't say we have better equipment.
Well, maybe better than mine.
I got a quick question, I didn't, I didn't quite understand through the chair.
Go ahead.
What you said there, they're now.
Online agendas, what we discussed in the recording.
That, that I got, but the buying, are they buying now?
Yeah, buying, yeah.
So they're actually, how the kids are probably buying houses, so.
Yeah, no, you got the article that I cut out of the paper this morning.
They're starting to buy it, now they're starting to buy.
And you know what disturbs me more, and I'm going to just, uh, cut this short. Today's paper, again, hopefully the papers are accurate, but actually, we know it's only fifty-fifty. According to our president, he's going to cut boom stamps, home heating aid, social security, Medicaid, Medicare, aid to cities, healthcare, the gateway tunnel. Maybe, just my personal opinion, as you know, whether you agree with me or disagree with me, I don't feel pilot programs should be a thirty-year program, a short-term program I could live with. I prefer condominiums, they're ownership, you know, they're more stable homes. I don't believe in it, like I said, the thirty years is what irks me the most. That's only my personal opinion, of course, but like I said, I prefer the condos. And my concern is, how many more pilot programs are going to be taking place in Bellville? And after, after such a period of time, what is going to happen to you? Like, let's just take ShopRite. ShopRite is going to say, hey, I've been here so long, I'm paying all these taxes, why don't I get a tax break? I'm worrying about the repercussions from all the businesses in town. But the bottom line is, I feel that the brunt falls on the taxpayers. And, uh, the other thing I was going to say, the problem here is, another article I was reading in Sunday's Star Ledger, it was talking about media. What happens is, everybody's on social media today. So if I'm on social media, I'm going to tell you what a great job I'm doing, I'm doing this and that, but not everybody's on it. I don't care to be on it. And unfortunately, not like years ago, we had a Bellville Times, we had a Bellville Post, people would read, people were more informed. I run into people all the time, and I'm like, don't you read, it's nothing, we don't have a newspaper in town, what can I tell you? You have to call town hall or call your council persons. I, I mean, I can't tell you. And the other thing is, like I said, I'm just, um, not too happy with these pilot programs for thirty years. Five years I could absorb, maybe ten, but, you know, you have to keep one thing in mind, if these pilot programs get out of, out of control, you do have an option, put it on a ballot, let the people decide, or you can get a petition and put it on the ballot ourselves and let the people decide. That's all I can say, it's only my opinion, nothing personal. Thank you.
Anybody else? Sheldon?
Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh Flight Street. I'd like to start off by thanking the council for taking the next step forward and bringing the Shop West Orange program to, to Bellville. I hope you see already the practicality benefit that not only residents, but also merchants would have in having a similar program here in Bellville. I hope you do move forward with that. Quick question, the Silver Lake Urban Renewal LLC, tax exemption, excuse me, I'm dealing with a little bit of a cold to have a call call. Is that to facilitate the Belmont development, that seventy-nine, eighty, whatever, three-one D, by the path mark? That's to facilitate that project?
Yes.
I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you. Uh, at the start of the council meeting, um, it was stated that you've been looking into a new AV system for this room, and the potential cost is about thirty-five thousand, I think you said, you quoted. I just want to let you know, I've been having similar discussions with the BOE, with our IT director, and, um, he's got several quotes to do a new AV system for the auditorium, which is just a little bit bigger than this, this room. The numbers he's giving me are about eighteen thousand to twenty thousand dollars. So what I'd like you to do is maybe give Jeff Peripato or Dr. Tomko a call, find out what vendors they're talking to, because if you're, you're being quoted thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars for a room this size, and we're, we're trying to do the same thing, all new state-of-the-art, uh, wireless systems, monitors on the walls, baffling on the walls to help with the acoustics. So I think ours, our efforts are actually beyond what you're calling for in this room, but for half the cost, so please, please give Dr. Tomko or Jeff Peripato a call. You announced earlier that the, uh, district is getting extra state funding, two-point-three-six-four million dollars. Just want to point out, you had said that you wanted to ask Dr. Tomko to come away with that new, uh, aid, that some of the referendum payments could be offset. But just for your information, the district has to make two referendum, referendum payments each year, one in March, another in September. Each of those payments is a little over one-point-six million dollars. So I think we're already, our business ministry may have already paid this installment, but if not, they're coming here very soon. Also, as Dr. Tomko will immediately tell you, for the last nearly ten years, our Board of Education has been underfunded by nearly nineteen million dollars. And what Governor Murphy is trying to do now is to make up for all of the funding we never got since two thousand and nine. So to, to anticipate that you might be able to wrestle that two-point-three-six million dollars away from Dr. Tomko is pretty much a lost cause at the start, but in my discussions with him, that money's already earmarked for other things. We're dealing with major complications with our referendum because of last year's tariffs, because the economy's doing well, and a lot of contractors have no shortage of work, we're seeing about a twenty percent increase in referendum costs, which is making it really difficult for us to achieve the goals of the referendum. So we're actually now looking at using some of our capital reserve to offset the cost increases that we were getting from the bidders. So again, I think you're going to have a very difficult time getting any of that money, uh, the extra state aid, get Dr. Tomko to agree to delay any, any of the other payments for the referendum. Lastly, one, last question for the evening. I know you're planning to possibly use eminent domain to acquire the property at seven-oh-five Main Street, at seven-oh-five, I think, to seven-fifty-seven. That property has a currently assessed value of about thirteen million dollars. But as I'm sure you know, when you start using eminent domain, it's not the assessed value that matters, it's the potential fair market value, which could be two, three, four times the assessed value. So hypothetically, suppose that it costs forty million dollars to acquire that parcel of land. How's the township going to, to finance that? It's going to be a massive bond issue, which means that the taxpayers of Bellville will ultimately be paying for the acquisition of that property. It may be a little bit premature, but I'd like to have an answer to that. If you do use eminent domain, knowing that it's going to cost tens of millions of dollars to acquire that fifteen acres, how is that going to be purchased by the township? That's it for the night. Thank you, thank you.
Sir?
Bill Milton, Hookwood Street. I just want to know if, uh, are we still going to be switched utility suppliers without our consent?
At this point, there's no, no plan to do that. There are going to be multiple public hearings and letters and multiple education long before that happens. But it's, sir, if you want, at this point, if you want to call PSE and G and put a block on your account, you can do that today and not worry about anything in the future.
Well, actually, I already did that, and they say what they're.
What you're doing is illegal, actually.
Then what, what you're doing is fine, then. You're, you're prevented from being switched.
Okay.
Anybody else? Second.
Yeah, we have three else, I don't care where you have them. Well, that was one question I wanted to ask you. I've got a few questions. First, uh, Fairway Park, sorry, the fence with the poles coming down from the snowplow, and have you checked into that with the Bridge Brook Apartments? Or is there some gathering in there, you put the guardrail up, and how do you say you've got some funds coming for your parks? Do you have any plans of doing anything about that?
I'll, then, just get all your questions out, and then we'll, we'll tackle them one at a time.
That was one. And the second thing about the, uh, parking meters that you were talking about, they're missing, the heads, what was happening is water's getting in there, it's freezing up and chopping the heads off. That was that. And then the third thing with, um, the gas and electric, switching our gas over. You're switching everybody's over without their permission, is that correct?
I'm not doing anything. So at this point, we establish, is that actually, is that your last question? Then I'll take them all one at a time.
Yes, yes. Well, I, I got a few questions with that. Did you negotiate any figures, any prices?
Absolutely not, it's way too premature. All we did was vote to establish the program in accordance with the state. So as Councilman Rovell said at the last meeting, the state tells us how to, how to initiate this program. We did step one. More steps, the, the steps coming in the near future are a letter going to every single homeowner, multiple, two if not three public meetings.
Public hearings.
Uh, education period. Then after that, we go to auction. If the auction price is not a substantial or, or five, six percent at least savings, we do nothing, and nothing happens to the program, nothing goes forward. In the meantime, if you want to opt out by, by calling PSE and G, putting a block in your account, you could do that, or I believe the company already has forms that you could opt out with that. But at this point, we've done nothing, nobody's switching anything over yet. Multiple public hearings will happen. Don't believe the, what you're reading online, it's not true. Nobody's been, nobody's been switched over yet. We haven't even signed the contract yet. We haven't even signed the contract yet.
It was electric, though, right? Just, just electric.
Just electric. Okay. And as far as the fence goes, we are in, we are in talks with, uh, petition associates, and we've basically already agreed on, on an agreement for, for a new fence.
You've got a guardrail going in on that?
That's going to be continued upon them.
First phase is to straighten out the pole, everything needs to be removed and replaced, to get the fence back up, and yes, they're, they're investigating the cost of installing a guardrail, so it doesn't have to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, Jerry?
Yes. Jerry, the virtual group street. This may be, or I may have missed something here tonight, or maybe just a procedural question. Ordinance number two for introduction, why is it identical to the ordinance that's on the table?
Different numbers.
It's not quite identical.
Yeah, it's not identical.
It's identical, it's worded here, your title might end up-
If you read the whole thing, it's not.
Yeah, the title might be the same, but not.
It's not.
It's not?
In fact, we talked about killing the one on the table, it's too much of a hassle, so just let it die.
Okay. Thank you.
Make a motion to close public?
Anybody else?
Here, Higgins, one forty-eighth Brighton Avenue. Regarding the Veterans Five K Run fundraiser on November tenth last year, twenty-eighteen, six thousand dollars was raised. Out of the six thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-fifty was allocated to each of the four Bellevle Veterans organizations for a total of one thousand dollars. When I questioned you about the remaining balance of five thousand dollars, you stated that it went to pay overtime to the police and the fire department. According to a subsequent OPR that I filed, there was no overtime paid to the police and the fire department. So the question remains, what happened to the five-thousand-dollar balance?
So the, I can't believe we're still talking about this Five K Run. So we raised six thousand dollars in income, we obligated, I'm glad now you've corrected it, because you used to say that we obligated a thousand dollars to each of the veterans, you've now corrected that to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. There's also a two-hundred-and-fifty dollar scholarship going out, that's twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars. We have plenty of other expenses, which I think you already OPR requested, and saw those additional expenses. Things like the DJ, things like the company that did the timing, the Porta-Johns, there's plenty of other expenses that were there. The final expense was absolutely, and I have the information somewhere, was absolutely the amount of overtime that we paid to police and fire. Whether or not your OPR request picked that up, I can't speak to, but I can tell you for a fact that I checked dollar amount. Anybody else? Ma'am?
Wendy Harris, seventh Quicken Street. We still have a problem with parking in the area. There is now, seems to be, I don't know if it's a new business, but parking in the location under fifty Washington, it's a warehouse or whatever, now they are parking cars inside of there, and they're now parking cars where the valet for the restaurants, all the dominoes, these are parked, these are parked perpendicular, now there's business, it's parking their cars there, stay there twenty-four-seven, which now moves the valet people, which is snowballing again onto Quicken Street. Again, we still have people that are leaving cars there for days. Seem to have some kind of connection, if I call the police and they come to market, mysteriously, the cars are moved around, still on the street, but just different locations. We have cars that, there's a truck that's parked there with a snowplow that has no sticker on, inspection sticker, but it's taking up like a space and a half. Parking is really getting out of hand. I don't know, what can we do, can we have permit parking for the street? Something needs to be done, I'd like for somebody to look into it, it's getting ridiculously out of hand.
Thank you, ma'am. So, normally our police chief is here, I do see, you're sitting right next to Deputy Chief Corbough. So I'm sure he's already made a note of it, and we'll actually be addressing that. Anybody else, sir, ma'am?
As you know, we have a business doing signs, the signage.
Give us your name and address.
Yeah, I'm sorry, so state your name and address for the record, please.
John, from Digital Data Solutions, our business at seventy-four Washington Avenue. We're having issues with the sign, because it's telling me, maybe it's telling me that we can't complete sign to ten percent of the size of the building, not builders. I'm agreeing with that, okay, but some signs are already there, and there's a particular sign and it's located in one-twenty-four, in Washington Avenue. And this customer, he asked me to rename it, using the same structure, the structure's already there. And I told my customer, I said, the sign looks like a little bigger, I think it's gonna be rejected, because I had to make it to the ten percent of the building. So he came here to the township, he said, we had permission, this particular sign already had a permission last year, two thousand and eighteen. It was approved in two thousand and eighteen, to rename it. And it was owned by a company from Bloof, from Bloofville. Or North, or maybe Norrist. So now I want to rename the same sign, and it was rejected. I don't know why it was approved last year. The company's gonna try another town.
Anything I can add?
Same sign.
So this, I'm aware, they've actually called my office, so I'm aware of this. There's other, and just so we know, Councilman Ravel, this isn't the first sign. They're actually quite interesting, because they own a sign company. So they do a lot of signs for storefronts in Bellevle. And we recently had a, Councilman Cosrally was there with me for a tax store that was your former business, I think, on Washington Avenue. And even that person, Councilman Ravel, was, it was a light box sign that all they were doing was sliding out the panel.
It's a pre-existing sign.
And that required a permit, a delay, and a wait, and everything else. So I have several of these types of issues that are in my office, Councilman Ravel, but-
Got it.
We, if we can take your complaint, or take your issue, or your requests, I guess the manager can maybe ask the construction official. As you maybe heard early on in the meeting, we're looking to make some different departments more efficient in trying to speed things up for you, because I've heard your story, and I know that as a business owner, you try and get a permit, it takes fifteen days sometimes, and then it takes longer, and then there's a review period, and that affects you and your business. Those are some of the efficiencies that we're trying to figure out to speed the process up for you. We're kinda limited ourselves.
I acknowledge this, there's a lot of signs in Washington Avenue that's being changed the name with the same structure, not downsizing. But this sign's been done by another company, it's out of the, out of pay.
They probably don't ask for permits.
They probably just move out, yeah.
So they're being, not penalized for trying to do it right.
No, no, you're right.
On what?
Follow the law.
But I'm presuming that this sign was approved last year, to rename it, and now it's denied to me.
So if you, can you give us that copy to the manager, maybe the manager can ask the construction official tomorrow?
Does he have a copy of the permit for that sign?
I will bring a copy tomorrow.
I mean, that would be the other thing. Does he have a copy of the permit for that sign? If you're telling me that was approved, all right, there should be, there should be a permit for this.
This person, he left it one year and his property's burned. They sought another, another person.
Well, you're speaking to, I'm well aware of the problem.
I'm completely cognizant as well. But was, did the guy get a permit to do that? That's my question.
Does he have a permit?
If there, well, if you do us a favor, ask the gentleman to give you a copy of the permit that he got for that sign?
Yes.
That's good, make a copy and bring it in.
I believe whenever a business changes, and you need a new sign, you need to go for another permit.
But it's the same guy, though, you're saying, right? It's the same person?
It's not the same.
It's a different business.
It's a different business?
It's a different business.
Same sign, different business.
Same box.
Different final letters.
Different final letters.
But it takes a really long time, yes, but.
Okay. Wait, is there more information, or?
Well, um.
You don't wanna get in trouble later, get it all out now.
We just need to make signs ten percent from the last six, seven years.
Yeah.
That's why I understand why this one, particular one, it was approved last year. Okay. I think that, I have a feeling like that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Make a motion to close, poll.
Second. Motion made, second, to close public transportation, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrally.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robell.
Yes.
Strumlober.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes, so before we go into new business or the consent agenda, I was pulling out some of my information here. I actually do have the expenses for the Veterans Day Five K Run. Burner printing was seventy dollars, the rock timing was eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. There was another a hundred-and-twenty dollars for shirts, a thousand dollars to Blue Rhino. We gave four thousand, a thousand dollars in donations, another two-hundred-and-fifty is coming. That's three-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety dollars. And then for overtime, I forgot to mention DPW, we have DPW at nineteen-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and ten cents. Police Department, three-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. And the fire department was just four-hundred-and-forty dollars, which was probably for the ambulance. That's our expenses, everybody, that's the information that I have. Lastly, before we continue, I always like to correct the record when somebody says something or cherry picks information, which is very common here. So we had a mention about pilots and Jersey City. Again, I happen to read a lot about pilots, and I read that specific Jersey City article. And I don't want my council colleagues to ever think that there's competing information out there just because someone says it, we don't necessarily have to take it at face value. So if I cherry pick out some of the quotes from Mayor Fulop, the Fulop administration has been focusing, has been focusing its tax abatement policy away from Jersey City's waterfront, toward the rest of the city. So the headline for that article was, Jersey City Ends Pilots. But really, they're ending it downtown the waterfront, toward the city. What Mayor Fulop says is, what we started to do was phase them out to incentivize development to other areas of the city. He ends by saying, Fulop says the city has about two-hundred properties benefiting from long-term tax payment, thirty-nine coming since he took office in two thousand and thirteen. Of those thirty-nine that are mentioned, most of them are away from downtown. They are incentivizing areas that have never seen development before, ever, period. So that's really the article that we're talking about, thank you. Can we go on to consent agenda?
Make a motion to move the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made, second, for consent agenda, any motions, petitions?
Pull number eight.
Number eight.
Yeah.
Yep, pull number eight. We have a consent agenda, we have a motion made, second? We do? We do? Clerk, call the roll, consent agenda.
Councilmember Cosrally.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robell.
Yes.
Strumlober.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes, resolution number eight.
Eight, just, I know you had a little speech about Michael James, he's not here right now, but half of the audience has changed. So maybe, Mayor, you wanna say the same speech again, about Michael James? Just for the sake of the half the people that are here now.
Sure, I did my part.
Well, so we had one of our residents who actually lives in Bellevle, went to high school with, was driving along Route twenty-one, and he happened to see someone who drove into the Passaic River, and being the good Samaritan that he is, he jumped into the river and helped the lady get back to the shore while the police were on-site assisting also. So we gave him a resolution, he was here earlier with his wife and kid, and the kid was a little rambunctious, so he didn't wanna stay here, so we gave it to him early instead of later in the meeting. So I just wanted to recognize him for everyone that's here.
We are also gonna be recognizing the Bellevle police officers that were involved. We didn't wanna do it the same day, to take anything away from him as a civilian. But we will be doing that in the near future. All right, so we have a motion to move it?
Motion to move.
Thank you. Motion made, second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrally.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robell.
Yes.
Strumlober.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes, new business. Is there just one item for new business?
There's actually two items. The first one is a resolution, the attorney that was representing us in the litigation matter has left his firm, so, in terms of continuity. And this is just a recent phenomenon, and something has to be done relatively quickly. And rather than reinvent the wheel, we need to appoint the attorney, really, the law firm, but a new law firm, a new attorney who has represented the township already passed two or three years.
The old attorney with a new law firm, is that?
It's the old attorney with the, we originally, you, before I was here, hired an attorney to represent, a law firm to represent the township. That law firm had an attorney in it that was handling the case on behalf of the firm. That attorney has now left that firm and has joined a new firm. There's urgent matters that have to be dealt with.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Five minutes is up, by the way. Motion made, second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrally.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robell.
Yes.
Strumlober.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
The second item is, there's going to be a commercial filmed at the Washington, I mean, at the Franklin Avenue Firehouse. They've asked us to sign a release so that artwork, meaning things in the firehouse, the shield and whatnot, can be used. I wanted to bring it before Mayor and council, because frankly, I don't think the, it's a private company doing, using the firehouse and paying the township to use the firehouse to film a commercial, it's a protein drink. But if we've signed, if the mayor or the township manager signs the release, they could use the insignia for the fire department, which says-
Which we endorse.
Seems to be endorsing.
The endorsement, I recommend against that, they can do it where they can use the insignia and block out Bellevle, Bellevle, New Jersey, or I don't know exactly how it reads, but, and I think that we should not sign that, but I can't make that decision, it's a decision-
Well, we gotta modify it, right?
You can, you can, I can, yeah. There could be an exposure in the event that something happens with that protein drink.
Somebody drinks that drink.
It looks like the statute of enforcement, and I checked with them, they will not abandon doing the commercial there if they can't use that.
Are we getting paid the motion picture?
Two thousand dollars a day.
Yeah, that's what it is, yes, it's a one-day.
If they wanna feature the new chief, when they said we're in the-
It's one day.
You're in that?
Okay, good.
I'm ready to make a motion to approve it with the changes.
Make a motion to approve it with the changes.
Second.
Motion made, second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrally.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robell.
Yes.
Strumlober.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Didn't you have something on new business?
Oh, no, we slipped that in last minute. Okay, need a motion to adjourn.
Wait, I got, we got one list, and we can-
Okay, allow your chest.
Well, I am. So, I want to pass a, you know, move a resolution to rescind the committee's for us to evaluate at a later time. Can you do that, Kelly?
That's something we can do in new business?
I want to rescind the committee's resolution.
Yeah.
So that we can look, you know, revisit it, revisit some of the language and stuff, because I think we need to do that to protect ourselves.
I second that.
What about the committees that are already in force, like-
That's why we can think, you know. I mean, you know, I think we can go pretty quickly and redo them next meeting, next meeting, yeah.
Well, he hasn't had an opportunity to speak to the, yeah, we could potentially wait until that happens.
I'm asking to rescind it at this point, and that's all I'm asking, you don't have to vote for it.
I second that.
Okay. Is this something we can do in the new business, you're comfortable with it?
A resolution will have to be drafted, but yes.
Does somebody wanna put the language into the record?
Kelly, can you put that in?
No.
Oh, yeah, I just rescind in the committee, the existing committee resolution.
Just a clerk, is that the statutory offices only, or for all?
If we do for statutory, I would like to do this for statutory.
Statutor.
Just statutory, yeah, do it that way. That makes it easier.
I only bring that up because that's what you said before.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree, because that leaves the other ones in place. That leaves everything else in place.
Will you vote on it, or what?
Yeah.
That's true.
Just the statutory, what's the statutory office? What's the statutory office, Mark?